One who wishes to speak in opposition's application. I see one hand, if you want to come up and state your name, your address, whether you're a resident of the city of Houston. Five votes, ten minutes.
Deb Donaldson, question four six four twelve. I'm just wondering why Mr. Sell is leaving the approval for this when he does not get that approved?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, then I'll close the public hearing. Do y'all have any questions, pretty much?
Uh, Jerry.
Yes.
Very glad to see you back.
Thank you, sir.
It's been a long time and I, you know, kind of respect. You're going through a hard time and it's really good to see you.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
And I will close the public hearing and I believe that's all the business we have on our public hearing today.
All right, I will make a motion to adjourn the public hearing at five thirty-six. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed. And with that, we will move over to the work session. I will make a motion at five thirty-seven to go ahead and open that up. May I get a second? All in favor? All opposed. All right, agenda approval, again amended, as you're aware. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? All opposed. All right, mayor and council reports. Mr. Metz, we'll start with people after me.
Um, I was wanting to put something together for local business owners to start meeting maybe quarterly, have some sort of meetup for local Houston business owners and just have meetings and discuss ways that we can uh grow local businesses and improve local businesses.
Stop local. Stop local?
Stop local, exactly.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Confusing where my, uh, where my...
Where you're at right now?
Where I'm at right now, I, I...
Public works.
I've been working with Brad a little bit and, and working with the city, uh, the sheriff's department, the sign. Don't have any reports, but uh I'm sure we're gonna be getting good reports tonight. I think we're gonna be...
Chief Hales, you wanna go ahead and give us a rundown of your report?
All right, um, for anybody that doesn't know me, I'm Brad Hill, I'm the chief of police, uh, department here. And uh I'd like to say we're in the final stages, I'll get into that in a minute. But as far as the report right now, I'm sure a couple of y'all have seen the new vehicles sitting out there at City Hall. I purchased those vehicles for nearly nothing. Uh, we had a city, uh, that'll all be a public record eventually, but a city that offered me those vehicles is pretty much a giveaway ring. Uh, so that would be vehicles for uh the officers to drive once we get started and hire a couple more officers, part-time people. Um, we're in the process of now trying to decide if we're gonna decal them or wrap them or paint them. Uh, so next council meeting, I'll have y'all report on that. Uh, finally, our documentation and our software is ready to be installed. Our report writing system will be installed Wednesday, uh, myself. And if y'all have not met my assistant, uh, Cheryl Davis, uh, she started a few weeks ago with us and she has been a big help. But me and her will start training Wednesday on the new software and this will allow us to be writing citations, entering citations, accident reports, incident reports, everything I've been doing by hand since January, now we have a system for it. That's a plug-and-play computer system that does it all for you. Uh, report writing to the state, accidents, go to the state, citations, everything to correct the state from that reporting system. So that's a big step, um, and, and the final step, really. Uh, and I have on here, as of calls, uh, since January, I've answered eighty-six calls, generated eighty-six case numbers. As of just a few minutes ago, accident on Highway fifty-three, I'm up to a hundred and one now since January. So there is a lot going on, especially on Highway fifty-three. That's the third major wreck I've worked there in the last four days, uh, right in front of our park. So court, uh, we'll start our first court date, it'll be here in the depot, it'll be on June the ninth. And I'll get into in just a minute, uh, our court staff. Um, but that's all I got right now, I'll see you again in just a minute.
Dr. Sterling, do you have a take?
Uh, the only thing I have is that I have secured a quote from Aflac. I'm sure many of you familiar with that company. Uh, the representative is gonna meet with Jennifer and I on United States. And he's gonna present, uh, this quote, you know, to us and uh then we'll go from this post city importance. Long in short term, just...
All right, Mr. Ferswell?
Um, you know before, I'll wait until you have business and...
Perfect. All right, so, excuse me, new business again. Items number one and two, they have been removed at the request of the applicant. Going over to item number three for the rezoning. You have that question? Yeah. Did you guys have any questions or...? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Jerry, you did a good job on explaining that one. I think we're good on that one. Um, Brad, number four for the resolution for the court schedule.
Okay, uh, y'all should have it in your package. What we're looking at on the court schedule is the second Thursday of every month at three P.M. And for now, it'll be held here in the depot until we, uh, get a new city building that can hold court. Uh, so that should be in your package. Um, I'm not sure if it got removed, but how court dates will work is, uh, the fourteenth of the month before the second month, it will always change. So, uh, but for now, the second Thursday of every month, three o'clock, we'll hold city court, municipal court in this building. And the date should be in the package.
Perfect. And number five, we are gonna be updating, um, some of our ordinances. Is that correct, Brad?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, the first is municipal court, we changed a little bit in there. Uh, main thing to show that it's gonna be in this building at three P.M. every second Thursday. Um, that's chapter five of ordinance, the police operating manual, um, it's chapter seven, that's the policy that I wrote, standard operating policy. All police departments, sheriff's department, everything has a policy that has to go by. As far as officer use, of course, um, everything's in there, firearms, how you work an accident, it's all in the policy. So that has to be updated because we haven't had one since two thousand and ten. Then you get into traffic control, which is chapter eleven. Um, and that is, uh, our speed regulations, so I had to go back with the D.O.T. And I actually asked for a little bit more on the speed that we had, that we didn't have before. Uh, Peachtree Road used to only go to twelve across them, that's as far as you could enforce the speed. And if you live down Peachtree Road, which I know a lot of you do, the whole road needed to be on there. So I went back to D.O.T. and I, I petitioned for the whole road. They granted that. Uh, so the roads that are approved list, Mayor, are right there to your right. When we get into the other session, it'll need to be signed by Mayor and Council and numberized. That way we can forward it to D.O.T. And as soon as it's forwarded to D.O.T., we're gonna go ahead and run speed detection on all the roads that are approved on that list. Um, chapter fourteen, the noise regulations, as far as, I know a lot of y'all have been upset about, uh, people starting their bulldozers up in five o'clock in the morning. So we went in there to the ordinances and it's from ten P.M. to seven A.M., it's quite a time in the city. Um, people be out blowing your car horn, racing the car down the road, which I'm gonna get you for that anyway, but... You didn't have a race car in the middle of town at midnight, revving the motor. Um, so then we'll get into chapter thirty-one, which is general offenses. Uh, that'll be things like disorderly conduct, drinking in public, um, jaywalking, anything that's not written under a state statute that goes under city ordinance, which would just be a fine instead of a prison jail. Um, all cities have that. I was hoping... Um, then we get into chapter thirty-three, which is nuisances, which is, you know, people not cutting their grass, um, not keeping up to date with what they're supposed to in their lawn, things like that. Uh, cars that are parked in the wrong place, junk cars parked in the, in the yard, which is a, you know, a big thing that we're looking at now. We get into chapter forty-two, and I actually, uh, asked for chapter forty-two to be removed, that's false alarms. The way I look at it is that if you have a burglar alarm on your house, it's there to make sure nobody breaks into it, okay? That's the first step if somebody broke into your house. So if we charge you fifty dollars every time we come out, that's gonna make you turn your burglar alarm off. And that's not what I want to see. Uh, so I asked for that to be removed from the ordinance. I don't agree with charging people to come out next to burglar alarms. Um, that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, number six, to appoint Judge Green.
So Judge Green, he was already our, our city judge as far as codes. He had already been sworn in as our judge for codes. He also came to me and said he would like to be the city judge for municipal court. I gladly took him on. If y'all know Judge Green, he's the magistrate court for Jackson County. He has a ton of experience, he's a great guy. Uh, so it's my recommendation, we use him. He's a great judge, very fair, uh, both sides of it.
Now I'll also add to that, Chief, that using a city judge saves the city on, uh, paying for training for someone that's not already a judge. That's a two-day economic...
Okay, um, number seven is to appoint prosecutor Amy Carter. And I actually will recuse myself from voting and any deliberation on it. She is related to me through marriage, so I'm gonna let these guys take over with the seat that they have. And Brad, if you wanna...
So Amy Carter was actually recommended to me by Judge Green. And, uh, Amy used to work for the V.A.'s office in Jackson County before she moved to a private practice. She's also the solicitor for the city of Commerce. Um, so I think she'd be a great fit here in Houston. Uh, she came highly recommended by Judge Green and, and that's really who she needs to work with is the judge.
Judge Green gets her a sign-off, I give her a sign-off. And, uh, Carter's, uh, any sort of issue, uh, Judge Green's a, a great judge and I approve that one hundred percent.
Um, to appoint a public defender, I guess we have to, if you wanna...
So we actually had two people put in for public defender when I put it out there at first. We didn't have anybody, then all of a sudden here come in two applications. Uh, one was Ms. Wylie, that works for Brownsville Police Department, and another was Ms. Rigdon. She already works in Commerce, Bill, Amy Carter. Um, and honestly, they, they were both great applicants. I recommend Ms. Rigdon. Number one, she came in fifty dollars cheaper per, per court session and, hey, gotta save the city on... Uh, and she already works with the solicitor at Commerce. So, you know, if they're already working together at one city, why not just keep them together at this city also?
All right. And number nine, the court fine schedule.
So, uh, I'm gonna ask me, we didn't have a court fine schedule, even looking back in two thousand and ten when the, when the police department was before, we didn't find the, the fine schedule. So me and Ms. Davis went in, uh, we looked at several different cities around here, pulled their court fines and looked and seen what we thought fit Houston the best. And I came up with a, a court fine list. This is fines for ordinances as well as state laws. Uh, even if you write a state law in Houston, you, you still have to have a fine for it. When I approached Judge, Judge Green, he said, yes, we gotta have some type of fine scheduled to start out with. Even though it says in the ordinance, fine up to a thousand dollars, we have to have some type of list to go by and say speeding is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have to have some type of baseline to go by, uh, even though, you know, if you make the judge mad, he could fine you up to that thousand dollars. But this fine list is just something plainly to go by. And that should be in everybody's package.
All right, thank you, Chief.
I guess I'll...
That's it. All right, line item number ten, store commission terms. Mr. Ferswell, could you take that?
Yes, um, so we've been talking about restarting our store commission here for several months. We, uh, it has actually been dormant for a little over a year, with things that were going on as they were, the best just to put them to that burner. Um, it's very important to me and any of us here in town, preservation of our historic property and our history as a whole. And, uh, so getting this commission restarted is more than just, uh, adding a commission to discuss that. It will also be able to facilitate us to, uh, grants and monies that are available for historic preservation, in terms of that nature. Uh, primarily for a downtown area, but also, uh, anything historic about our community that's related to Houston that we can bring in, even objects and those things. We do have some buildings that are gonna be assembled on, uh, for that reason, they're very historic to the town, a number of different objects. But for today, what we're doing is establishing the terms. We're starting off with three commissioners, uh, we will expand those after we get started. Um, we're expecting to have our first meeting probably within the next thirty days. We will actually announce that day and generally make sure we get all the proper steps of publication. There, out of the three, there'll be, uh, two two-year terms and one one-year term. Um, I was formerly on the historic commission. I am very passionate about history and especially, um, history of the eighteen and nineteen hundreds, uh, over nineteen hundreds. Um, so I've been asked to, to be on this commission to start with, so I will take the one-year term. Um, Joe Vogt and, um, Ms. Marsha Hunter will be the other two initial commissioners and they will vote out of two.
Thank you, sir. All right, number eleven, the new website quote. It's Jennifer, we love you, she'll come on now.
So, um, it's long overdue that we have a new website, so we're excited about this. Um, we do have in our budget, um, to have this approved for this year. This, um, this website is gonna cost us three thousand dollars, a little over three thousand dollars, um, and that's for the base. If we decided to add additional items, um, it will be, it will cost additional, but we will bring it to more mayor and council if you decide. Uh, the staff recommendation is for that. But for right now, we are just, um, asking for, to get started with the three thousand, a little over three thousand dollars, uh, for that base, um, on the website.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so for line item number twelve, stormwater filling software. Um, I know we've kind of been bouncing some of that around and Shannon and I actually are going to set up a meeting with the county to try and see if we can get it put on our taxes as opposed to having to purchase. It was what, five thousand-ish, five thousand dollars for the software? Um, so that would save us some money. So I would suggest during voting, us table it. Do you have anything else?
I have a public problem, I'll notice. So what we're trying to get Jackson County to do, because we all pay Jackson County taxes, is to take care of sending these bills out, including with your annual property tax bill. And, uh, they came back, told us, no, we don't have time to do it, uh, a few months ago. And, um, we're not necessarily against paying them to do it, they already have the system in place. Everybody's tax parcel, you get your annual tax bill. It's a lot simpler system, that's why the Jackson County school system puts their mileage rate on your tax bill, because it's simple. We just want to be able to use the same thing. And they first told us, no, it's a little bit of a headache for them to do the initial run, because you gotta get all those parcels and the costs and stuff involved. At long term, seems to be pretty simple. Uh, so we're gonna go back and see if we can have a part-harm, I mean, work, see if we work out a deal that's beneficial revenue.
Thank you. Um, line item number thirteen for engineering services. I know that we got one back from EMI, and I've been seeing EMI for quite some time. Shannon, why don't you, since you've dealt with them, your entire...
So, once a year, we just have to take a request for qualifications for, uh, engineering services. And the city's used, uh, EMI, uh, probably seven, eight years now. I know they got us out of a pretty bad jam.
Seven years, no?
Seven years. They've done fantastic work for the city, saved us a lot of money, we pay them, you know, that they've saved us a lot. Got us, got us out of a hole seven or eight years ago and, uh, he's the only engineering company that, that has submitted qualifications. I think everybody here on the council knows them very well, Fred Ray, I know you're just getting used to them, and you too, but, uh, Scott. I know y'all all met them and talked to them, they do quality work in the city.
Item number fourteen for the alcohol license that Jared, you wanna...
Yeah, Mayor, I'll summarize that for you, try not to make it too long. We, all this ordinance would do is, is bring our distance requirements from schools, churches, and other institutions, bring those into alignment with state law requirements. And the reason we got into this in the first place was we had, uh, Mr. Greg Ridden on the corner up here on the north side of town who was asking about the, the ordinance and whether he could, if he built something on that corner, would he be excluded from an alcohol permit? And we, we discovered that, yes, under the state law, he would not be able to get a permit even if we changed our code. Even, even with this change, it doesn't solve that one issue, which is what we started out trying to solve. But in any event, we decided to go ahead with the amendment, which makes it simpler because then you don't have to look at both, um, state law and local law and get confused with how they define the distances from the establishment and so forth. I don't know if Ab has anything to add on this, we kind of handed it off to him.
No, Jerry did a great job putting it together and it does just bring us into the form of the state law.
All right. Uh, line item fifteen for the purchasing policy amendment. Um, again, on this one, Shannon and I and Jennifer and also Tiffany, we're still going back on what we will allow for thresholds for staff to approve things without it coming to mayor and council. So that's still kind of up in the air, so again, I would suggest Googling that during voting. Um, I'm sure Jennifer can answer any questions that the council may have.
Fifteen?
Uh, well, now it's...
Sure.
Yeah, fifteen, yeah. All right, so number sixteen, update bank signature cards. Uh, we are doing it again, we are updating it to add a new interim city manager on, Mr. Shannon Sell will go on that. So that's pretty straightforward. And then again, on number sixteen for updating the bank's signature cards, it actually is what, our yearly renewal?
I think it's almost seventeen.
Oh, one, right. I'm sorry, wrong number, but right thing, it's our yearly renewal, correct? So we're just having to renew our line of credit for that one. And then item number eighteen, Jennifer, for the spring festival.
Mayor and council, um, this is just, um, we're just asking, given our base of fourteen spring festival, that y'all allow us and give your blessing that we can have alcohol here. Line item number nineteen is to approve a permit for Slice Pizza to serve alcohol at the spring festival. And this goes along with, um, having alcohol at the May fourteenth spring festival. Uh, we would like to have Slice, which is a business owner, on the square to build some theaters. And line item twenty, to close the city square on May fourteenth of twenty twenty-two for the spring festival. Mayor and council, this is also aligned with the rest of, um, or with the last two, um, items. Um, we will need to close down city square only, um, for that day to have the spring festival. All the vendors will be on super...
So my question is, uh, the new business items one through twenty, what can we put on the consent agenda?
Uh, we could do four.
We could start at four.
Four.
One and two are gone.
One and two are gone.
And two, three. Four we can, five we can, six we can, seven we do not, I have to recuse myself. Um, eight we can, and nine, ten, eleven. I would say no, so twelve, um, just because I would like... Yeah, okay, so let's do no as well. Uh, thirteen we can, fourteen, I would say fifteen, no. I'm gonna put motion there. Update bank signature cards, so sixteen, yes, seventeen, yes, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, yes.
Just for clarification, I assume that by putting, uh, the public, then on the consent agenda, you, you're putting on the consent agenda, uh, Chief Hales' recommendation, right?
That's right, sir.
Okay, uh, if anyone here wishes to address the mayor and council tonight, please raise your hand. I'll go over a few rules of procedure and call you up. All right, let's get everybody's hands, I'll see how many we've got, see, one, two, three. All right, uh, when I call y'all up, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and whether you're resident of the city of Houston, and then present your comments. Just like I said in the public hearing procedure, please refrain from personal attacks. Please, please address your comments to mayor and council. All speakers will be limited to three minutes, and I will monitor the time, and as you get close, I'll give you a little grace. But I'll ask you to generally keep your comments as possible to three minutes. So, uh, ma'am, I'll call you up first.
Deb Donaldson, four six four twelve one. I missed the answer during the public comment period. And several of the items tonight were being addressed by Mr. Sell. We've not met, we don't know each other personally, this is not personal. I'm just curious how legally he was appointed as city manager? And as such, he has the authority to negotiate on behalf of the city? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two more right there. Sir, if you wanna come up? Please state your name and your address, and whether you're resident of the city of Houston, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm Ross Bearingsley, press one, resident, two ten, Ontario Way. This evening, I'm requesting a moratorium on any future development at the intersection of Highway fifty-three and Peachtree Road. Recent zoning requests, like the one that was recently just pulled, re, uh, show that there's a great need for a thorough traffic study that needs to be done for traffic light at this, at that intersection forward. Traffic becomes more compromised. Increased traffic from Wynder and Brazelton on Highway fifty-three, also Peachtree Road with, with the completion of the turnaround path, which is wonderful, by the way. Will bring in more schools traffic or construction traffic. Added development traffic, including our development down here at Twin Lakes. Tremendous stress at our intersection, if not already. A recent zoning for a convenience store on two point six one acres was only just pulled. For comparison, the racetrack on Highway two eleven and Highway one twenty-four, and when it cornered, is two point one six acres. So that development, that convenience store, if it would have been approved, would have been half acre bigger than the racetrack. See for zoning is also what you use when you put a truck stop there, based on increased vehicular traffic. An annexation of development of Twin Lakes is shipped to the center of road of, of the town, basically, from the historic center of the depot, there we are, to that intersection down there. Um, the request on the map, I didn't get it, so I'm gonna show you. The first traffic sign should be, or first traffic signal should be in the center of town. And would also be Houston's first traffic light. This new light needs to be the most important new project created for the citizens of, of Houston and for the future of our city. We can still grow and provide proven traffic control tools. We need a traffic light at this intersection, please. We need a thorough traffic study that starts with a request from our local government as per D.O.T. as per the D O T regulation. Starts with us. We would love to work with the city official to make this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more hand back there. All right, ma'am, you'll step up, state your name, your address, whether you're a resident of the city of Bushton, you'll have up to three minutes.
Desert, one, Bushton, Georgia. Desert?
You said desert, pardon?
Yes.
Desert, right.
Desert. Um, I understand rezoning request that would allow the gas station to be in the story of Fifty Three and Peachtree Road under the C three commercial highway umbrella has been removed from the agenda, but I really, really urge the council that it's very important that that category not be allowed in future rezonings of that property, which will happen. Something is going to happen, but that is not an appropriate move. Previous speaker addressed that. Also, it is directly across the street from our most historic building in Bushton, which has received a nice facelift, it looks great. It's, uh, it's just not, um, appropriate and there's little left of the old Bushton. Also, Peachtree Road has always been residential, whether it's the, the new developments, Crestwood or Parrot Homes, the clearing has started for that now, residential or, um, small acreage agricultural. Don't put something that's so out of character there, please. The previous speaker also talked about this, but if you were to take a poll, I'm sure you'd find that currently the single most important issue impacting Bushton city residents is the increasingly dangerous traffic. And I'm going to particularly hear in the intersection of Fifty Three and Peachtree Road, um, lineups of up to fifteen cars occur when a driver attempts to turn left from Peachtree onto Fifty Three at rush hour. That impact spills over onto every intersection line. Residents are no longer willing to hear that maintaining Fifty Three and possibly installing a light or roundabout is not a city responsibility. These types of improvements require time, patience, and federal or state funding. It's not going to happen quickly, not as quickly as we would have. However, um, our city government is responsible for continuing to rezone, rezone, and rezone. Seldom, um, is petition ever declined. That adds more vehicles to our already failing infrastructure. A gas station convenience store would add a serious impediment to traffic flow with constant entry and egress. Already untenable conditions would worsen. So council members, listen to your constituents.
How long is the house this for?
And this is what we fear, what we're worried about.
Ma'am, I know you're speaking for a big group, so I'm gonna give you a little extra time, but if you can kind of bring it to me.
Okay.
No problem.
Two more lines.
That's fine, that's fine.
When this corner comes up for rezoning again, as it inevitably will, think carefully of what, um, of what you permitted that intersection. Don't, uh, downgrade the hype, the, uh...
Take it down, you're okay. I was just, I was just telling you, Richard, three minutes.
Okay. Um, surely something appropriate with the ambiance there of the old hospital and the traffic could be found in, um, he pushed in a truck.
Yeah. Man. Senior people. Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to rebuttal on, on state, um, we, we frequently have a gas station proposed in our town size and Fifty Three, and the council unanimously voted to, to not accept it. We, we don't want a gas station on our Fifty Three quarter.
Well, let's, let, I, I, I hesitate to interject, but let's don't say before we have a public hearing what some what we want and don't want, because I want to give anybody that makes an application a full and fair public hearing. So I appreciate your comments, Mr. Ledbetter, and I, and I think the message is delivered, but I don't want y'all making statements prejudging an application that hasn't been filed.
You don't want to? Yes, that's fine.
Mr. Billings, you, you had asked for about the red light, Peachtree Road and Highway fifty-three. Red light Peachtree Road and Highway fifty-three. Uh, of course, everybody should know that's Georgia DOT State Highway, they regulate that. We met with them last year, uh, at least a year ago, and their thought process was yes, is, and it was kind of like a traffic number, a certain amount of build out of the, I call it the culture development, both sides of Twin Lakes and Crestwood. There is, once they hit a certain number, another traffic study was going to be done, but then a red light right there was going to be almost a definite, that it was going to happen there. And that was going to be more, I, from their point, sooner than later. Uh, and somebody mentioned the cost, because this has kind of caught me off the top. The developer pays for that red light. I actually thought it would come out of state funds, but we all pay taxes. I would have thought it came out of DOT funds. The developer actually funds the entire cost for the red light.
At the corner of Peachtree and Fifty Three?
Peachtree and Fifty Three.
Or Twin Lakes and Fifty Three?
Well, whatever goes right there from, really still from what they were talking about, the developer will pay, but if they were talking about it first, it would be Peachtree Road and Highway fifty-three.
Well, that's two different locations, isn't it, Shannon?
I thought you said Peachtree Road and Highway fifty-three.
I did.
That is where DOT told us first that that would be the first one. And again, call DOT if you want to get updated stuff.
It's, it's not up to us to call DOT, Shannon. It says right here, it starts with a local government.
I'm telling you what DOT told your local government.
Okay, and this is what we are telling our local government to do. Follow it up.
We have to.
Follow it up.
Yeah, we started to hear you.
Okay, what are the results of that? Has, has a traffic study been done? Yes or no?
So, I would say more than one traffic study this big time. You can't do a development that size without a traffic study, and DOT told us there would be additional traffic studies.
Can we follow up?
Yeah, let's follow up.
Follow him.
Keep on him.
That's, that's all I have. Jennifer says, city met with me January.
And?
They just said they're not there yet, the red light. So we are pushing as much as we can.
Well, I guess we need to push further.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we asked for citizen input and had our hands and now we're through it, so we can't break open and have just a, a board meeting where we have lots of second floor, so.
Because we wouldn't want citizen input.
I'll call back up.
I would suggest, y'all got a good group here, I would suggest y'all reach out to City Hall and talk with them, and, uh, I'm sure City Hall would appreciate any kind of volunteers that want to help with DOT communications, so, uh, they're open, they're open each day, and please reach out, and I'm sure they would appreciate y'all's input and support. That's what tends to get DOT movement, is, is public.
You mean Bushton?
And that's what.
You mean Bushton City Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And what we're doing tonight.
Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and adjourn the work session.
I guess I would say, I, I, I heard y'all speak about this, but I've never, we've never received one email about what you're talking about. Sean, you're the only one.
That is not true. Okay, email, tell me where to send it, I'll be happy to start blogging. You're not returning emails.
I've been sending emails about different things.
We got, we got, we got a bunch of retired folks across, but we have nothing else to do.
Speak for me, is it my work? I have never, but I...
I'm in, I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. He'll send you a three hundred.
I'll make the second. All in favor? All opposed?
It's called government, it's best.
No, no, they're, they're voting now. I think I say the last one. It's interesting to see how it works.
Yeah. I'm gonna ask Brad about that.
There'll be some seats.
That's another thing that gets you. They put, they find police, the way he's going to get paid, he's going to get all his ticket.
I'm really not going to answer my question ever. They're never going to answer.
I'm hoping it's not going to bite us. I want to know why you got the big applause and I didn't.
I'm actually going to move closer.
Huh? Who are you with?
Just me, myself, and I.
Well, we appreciate this. Trust me.
Anyone?
Yeah, we're, we're in a meeting, can we just... Yeah, we're leaving.
Excuse me, sorry.
Nobody heard. Here, opening up the regular council meeting, I will make a motion. May I have a second? All in favor? All opposed? All right, so agenda approval, I will make a motion for agenda approval. May I have a second? Second, all in favor? All opposed? All right, so I have had a couple of questions asked about Mr. Shannon Sell, I'm sure he's a familiar face, so I wanted to go ahead and address that. We did have to make a couple of changes with our city manager that, or last interim city manager that we had in place, and Mr. Sell does have the knowledge, he is up today on city happenings, and he was available and is assisting us on transition period, which is the force mark on the entire city as well as council, and he is going to assist us in trying to keep the city flowing and keep it moving while we do look for another city manager. So I will make a motion, a public motion, to approve Shannon Sell or appoint Shannon Sell as our interim city manager, and I would also like for the council to...
Excuse me.
...ratify the following documents which Mr. Shannon Sell has looked at. Number one, electrical design service for lighting of the North Water Tank. Number two, design bill contract between City of Bushton and New Garland and Sotia. Number three, easement agreement between Jackson County and City of Bushton for Sellsville Park. All in favor? All opposed? All right, so thank you for that, Shannon, and Mr. Ab, the city manager?
Yeah.
City attorney?
Shannon, we're going to introduce the oath office. You want to stand up?
Absolutely.
You'll raise your right hand, and what I'll do is I'll read the entire oath, and then if you agree with it at the end, you can say, I do so agree, uh, so help be God. I, Shannon Sell, a citizen of Jackson County, state of Georgia, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will well, truly, and faithfully perform and discharge the duties devolved upon me as interim city manager for the city of Bushton, Georgia, that I will faithfully enforce the law of this city, that I will support and defend the charter of the city of Bushton, as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America, and that I will do all in my power to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Bushton in the common interest thereof. I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the state of Georgia, I am prohibited from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the constitution and laws of Georgia. So help be God. Do you so swear?
I do, so help be God.
I need a motion for a minute approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Good for me, for watch, twenty-first public hearings, twenty-first work session, twenty-first for your council meetings.
I'll make a second to that. All in favor? All opposed? All right, new business, again, item numbers one and two have been removed at the request of the applicant. Number three for the rezoning, I'll make a motion to approve.
And that's with the condition that Mr. White...
With the condition that Mr. or Dr. White did read out.
I'll second the motion with the condition for, uh, Dr. White.
Dr. White, okay. All in favor? All opposed? All right, line item number four, the res- resolution for the court schedule.
Four, five, six.
Oh, yeah, so you can have the consent agenda. All right. Do you want me to just read the article?
As I, as I understand it, y'all wish for the consent agenda to contain number four, the resolution for municipal court, number five, O dash twenty-two dash O two, those ordinance changes, number six, to appoint Judge Green and enter into a contract with Judge Green, number eight, to appoint the public defender of the Riddan recommendation given by Chief Field, number nine, to approve the municipal court fine schedule, number ten, the terms for the historic commission that Mr. Parks will read out, number eleven, the new website quote from Unico that Jennifer went over, number thirteen, to approve EMI to continue providing engineering services, number fourteen, O dash twenty-two dash O three, the alcohol license amendment that Jerry put together, number sixteen, to update the bank signature cards, number seventeen, R dash twenty-two dash O two, the resolution to renew our line of credit to the Central Bank, number eighteen, R dash twenty-two dash O three, the designation of the Bushton Spring Festival to allow alcohol, number nineteen, the special permit for Slice to sell alcohol there, and number twenty, the closing of city square related to that spring festival.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as Ab just read. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, make sure we got all the right ones. All right, so, Mr. Ledbetter, may I approach him, please, all off, number seven?
Number seven, we need to, uh, talk about who we'd like to appoint Prosecutor Amy Carter. Our mayor accused herself, so this would be between the other council members. I would make a motion to approve Prosecutor Amy Carter.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
All right, so, you, other, I think we only have two more, which would be line item number twelve for scorecard reviewing software. I will make a motion to table that line item.
And you want to table to the next council meeting?
Yes, to the May council meeting. Would anyone like to do a second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? All right. Then the last one is going to be line item fifteen, purchasing policy agreement. Again, I would like to see that table until May, so I will make a motion for that, but anyone like to second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Hayes, do we need an executive session?
No, we don't.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Sir, I'll second that, all in favor? All opposed?